We've got a full report tonight, so we'll move right along. If you have any questions, wave me down. There's quite a bit of data that we've included tonight. Of course, we'll start out with some razzle-dazzle time and show you just a little bit of community service some of our students have been working on. Then we're going to talk about enrollment and attrition update, and that will be for the entire 2018-2019 year. And we're going to talk about MCAS summary data. You have some data in your packets that weren't going to fit on slides, too much detail. Anyway, you can take a look at your leisure, and I'm happy to go through any of it with you at any time. And then we're going to talk about the 2019 DECE Accountability, it's the new system put in last year, and we'll talk about that. So a little razzle-dazzle. All right, so we had Dr. Stephanie Madox from Harvard University come, and she's been here, I believe, once before. She went to Dr. Doyle. Dr. Doyle actually found her, and students from AP Psychology, Bio, and Anatomy and Physiology got to spend some time, some time looking at brains. They've got little different brains from different animals, I'm not really sure. But what I love most about this is if you just take a look at the faces of our students, right? They are, look at his, look at his eyes, and you can see it so clearly on Facebook. This is wonder and amazement and awe that these students are experiencing. Look at the smile on her face. It's one of our younger students from Biology. These kids are absolutely amazed, and this is the kind of educational opportunities that our teachers bring to our students every day. This is why they love, they love to learn. So just so thrilled with this. I opened this up on Facebook, and I, my heart just leaps through the ceiling, just looking at these kids' faces.
It's worth noting, if I might interrupt, that Dr. Doyle was on paternity leave when this happened, and so he gave up his own personal time with his family to make sure that he was making those connections happen for his kids who came in from that time, so...
He sure did, and Dr. Doyle is back now after his new little, new little one has come into the world. I also wasn't sure if folks were aware that we have a fencing club here at AMSA, and this is run after school, and it's done by Kristi Jagowski. And, you know, I, once again, looked at these photos, and what I see here is, you know, the things that fencing teaches our students, you know, there's balance and agility and all kinds of skills and things like that. But I also see, if you take a look up here, this is one of our older students, and she's mentoring, she's teaching, she's leading the younger students in this fencing exercise. And then look at these two shaking hands when they were done, right? Great sportsmanship, and just so proud of these kids. And when you see these pictures, you can see all that they're learning. And this is held on Friday afternoons in the lower school cafeteria. Thank you, Kristi. All right, so this is, this was Mix It Up Day, hosted by, we have eighth grade mentors that mentor our younger students. They had, this is the Bullying Prevention Week. We also had Unity Day. You may have seen that advertised when our students wore orange to, oh, Mike, I don't think I can...
Wait, you want me to play?
Yeah, thank you. If you just, just wanted to show you, this was a Mix It Up Day that they ate with different students.
Why are we not?
No. What's your favorite sports team? You know how hard it is to go in circles? Your favorite sports team? And I just, I loved that because, first of all, it was organized by our eighth grade mentors, but also they had organized it with the school counselors. The school counselors had been running these activities all week long with the lower school students. And, and they were so open to the idea, you know? You didn't see anyone say, "Oh, I don't want to do this, I want to sit with my friends." They all included each other. I thought it was a wonderful thing for the kids to do. Oh, did my little thing die?
It might have been just because, once you play the video...
Yeah. It didn't go. Okay, this is a quick community service project that was done by Leaders of Tomorrow. Just wanted to show you this. One of the things you may know, this is where we were on Saturday. Right, so the kids actually go down here once a month, and Mark Vidal takes them down. The food is donated from Leaders of Tomorrow. The kids come and they prepare it, they set the tables, and they serve. Wonderful opportunity for our kids. Look how happy they look, and that's how we feel when we help take care of others. Okay.
Oh, sorry, can I add one more?
Yes.
So just so everybody knows, the AMSA golf team is playing in the States on Monday, so I just wanted to put that out there. And the Metro West Daily News is coming over to interview them and take pictures tomorrow, so I'll send out the link once it comes out.
Thank you, Liz. And also, our girls volleyball team is also playing very well this year. I heard they were 15-0 so far.
Seventeen and one.
Seventeen and one? Okay, there you go, I'm a little outdated, so they're doing a great job, too. Now we're going to look at enrollment and attrition update. This is where the entire year's debated and back and forth, how to actually break this up. I did give a mid-year report last February or so, decided to give you the full view so you didn't have to think about what it looked like before. We start with student enrollment. When Anders and I first came into our positions, we were well over 990, actually, during a mid-year point. So these numbers are off our student information system, but you can see in 2017-18, we had about 984 students. Actually, had more than that at one point, we had some withdrawals. And then 2018-19, we were told by the Department of Education very clearly, many times, to get our enrollment numbers down and under control, and we were able to bring it down to 973 last year. Start of the school year, and for our October 1st SIMS, we were at the 966, so yay! That's, yeah, that's an exciting thing, something we've been fighting with for years, and we had to make some really drastic changes in order to make that happen. Sarah Snow's been so instrumental in helping us get that under control, so thank you, Sarah. But we're very, very excited about that, and to go into our charter renewal on November 1st with our...
Quick question. Maybe you should know the answer to this. What was Destiny's target?
It's, our charter's a 966. So we are, yeah, we are there. We are there. That's why we have fireworks.
What is the SIMS? What is that?
The SIMS report is all the numbers that we send in to a couple of times a year. October 1st and March 1st, and that's what they base our tuition on. All right, and this is just some visuals that you can see how many students we have in each grade. You can see that ninth grade class is our largest class, and we have projections, I can, you've seen them, we can show you the updated numbers at some point if you're interested to. We will be adding some students into seventh grade when this current sixth grade class goes into seventh, but we're waiting for the larger classes to graduate on the other end. The goal is to have about 140 in sixth, seventh, and eighth, and we can maintain that, and then the numbers will be a little lower in 10th, 11th, and 12th, once we really are able to even all of that out. We expect that to take a couple more years. All right, so just by towns, just, you know, kind of interesting information. We have 546 Marlboro students, 131 Hudson, 73 Clinton, 54 Maynard, and then other, 162. We still have quite a few different towns that we have commuting here to AMSA, and most of those are siblings, except...
I was going to say, is every one of the others a sibling?
Not really, because last year, we had to take in some ninth grade students, and we went through all the waitlist for all the siblings in all the four core town. The same thing has happened this year. We've taken in some students from other towns recently, actually, in the last couple of weeks, ninth graders, and it's because we've depleted, we've gone through all the other waitlist. It is interesting, I think, you know, ninth grade, and you start calling people in September, October, and November, and they're very hesitant to leave their school year they've already started. Sometimes people from outside town, Shrewsbury in particular, have been waiting for a long time to get an opportunity, so they were willing to jump in October.
I will say, from a teacher's perspective, a lot of teachers were very uneasy when we opened up. We used to only take new students at the lower grades, and so when we found out we had to start taking ninth graders, a lot of teachers were freaking out because they're not going to, they're going to be so behind on the curriculum. But the kids that come in ninth grade, I have been so impressed with every kid who has come as a new ninth grader, those kids, they want to be here, they are dedicated, they are working hard, some of the nicest, nicest kids ever.
Oh, that's fantastic news. And we've actually taken in a few kids from Worcester this year, which is exciting. I love taking some students in from that side of town, too, and not one of our core towns, but excited to have them. Okay, this is attrition from 2018, so you've got your classes. You can see 2019, that was last year's graduating class, so those are 12th, and 11th, and it goes, it goes up that way. And then across the top, the first column after the class is the total of how many students we lost, and then it's broken down by, they returned to the ascending district, they moved in-state, out-of-state, they went to a private school. You can see the class of 2023, we had five students go to private schools. Those students were actually recruited, for the most part, for athletics, which is interesting. We had more of that happening this year than we've had in the past, but we've had some very talented athletes. And for Ask the Bet, you can see in the class of 2021, that's the year that they potentially can go over to Mass Academy, and we lost six students to Mass Academy this year. But the biggest, the biggest one is, so that's 12, 11, 10, 9. The eighth grade, that's definitely a transition year, that's, we lost 17, and you can see, you know, where they, where they moved back to. But that is a year where some students, they want to move out of their home districts for junior, for junior high, middle school, and then, and then back. Okay, so this is our waitlist. This is who is sitting on our waitlist right now, so across the top, you've got your grades, six, seven, eight, nine, and then your siblings, core towns, non-core towns. So just, you can see on the ninth grade list, on the far side, we depleted the siblings, we've depleted the core towns, and so we still have 117 non-core town applications sitting there, and that is what Linda is drawing from now. We have 623 students on the waitlist currently in those grades.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
So, you know, I know we're at the 966, so you have to lose one to take one, but how do you determine which grade to start? Do we always start with six? Like, what's the...
We would like to. So what actually has happened to us this year, and this was a scheduling mistake, honestly, is that we have maxed out with the number of students that we can bring in to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And that was, you know, we had new schedules working, and we all worked hard to make it balanced correctly, but there was a couple blocks during the day where there just weren't enough classes offered during that particular block, which put a, put a stop on it. So if you have, you know, X number of, you know, you have an English class, and you have art class, and a PE class, and a history, history or English, but you only offer four of them, and a max of 25 in a class, but you've got 106 students, it can be very, very tricky. And what happened to us due to some, some little tweaks in the, in the schedule is that the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade is, it's frozen. We just can't bring in one more student. I would love to bring in more sixth graders. It's frozen, and that's why it's just the same, we've brought in more ninth graders this year, but if a sixth grader leaves, we have to fill that sixth grade seat, but we can't add more than 105 that we have right now. I just don't have enough seats in four of the classes. And a lot of that is driven by our math levels. So we, the students come in, they get an assessment, and it determines their math level. Once that math level's in there, then you're working around that one math class for all the other classes to fit in.
But this is an annual problem?
It's an annual...
This is not a forever problem?
No, this is an annual...
So next year, a schedule can be figured out, you could bring in more seventh graders next year because you didn't have it, so...
Exactly. We're going to be much more mindful of watching where those little, those little stop places are going to be, and making sure that we have enough places and flexibility in the schedule to schedule in there. But that's what happened to us this year, so the only place right now that we have enough flexibility in the schedule, enough seats to offer, is ninth grade. Once again, the state regs say, if someone leaves sixth or seventh grade, we have to fill that seat in sixth or seventh, but otherwise, we can, we can fill into, into ninth for empty seats.
Listen, isn't the same thing true for eighth and ninth? If an eighth grader leaves, we have to fill an eighth grade slot?
Yes, absolutely.
Ninth grade leaves, you have to fill a ninth grade slot, but if someone from 10, 11, and 12 leaves the school, do you have the, that's where you have the flexibility to...
Bring it in somewhere.
To fill where you wish.
And we, thank you. And the only place right now we can fill is ninth grade, that we have seats and flexibility there.
But to some degree, I mean, ninth was significantly the largest class.
Yes.
At some point, there's no more ninth graders that we want to bring. Are we forced to bring another ninth grader in?
Yes, we have to have at least 966 students here, or you're going to be very upset with me when we don't have the tuition money.
Well, I have, I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what the bubble would do to future scheduling years as well, and what risk that would pose.
It's an issue, and we've had conversations with that. We're, we are definitely concerned about a wave, but, you know, we have to have 966 students in the, in the school, and...
So the plan for next year would be to have some more flexibility at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
Absolutely, absolutely. I really, in my mind, I was hoping to go up to at least 110, maybe even 112 in sixth grade, and unfortunately, just didn't end up having the flexibility, and we'll be much more mindful of that next year.
As attrition happens during the year, like, if a kid moves away in March, do we have to fill that seat?
No, we don't. It's up till February 15th, and you have to fill up to February 15th. After that, we don't have to fill, so if a student leaves in March, then Linda can open up that seat for the next year.
For the next year, okay. I knew there was a cutoff, I didn't remember where it was.
Yep, that's it. All right, now we're going to talk a little bit about MCAS. Roger?
One more question. I don't know if you have the data now. If you go back one slide, please. How does this compare, you know, this is the first time I've seen it broken out in this way, but maybe starting next year, if we can compare or start seeing trends to see...
Sure. Right.
The reckless breakout.
We could, we could, I'm sure Linda has that from last year, because Linda's been with us two years now, so she would have something similar if you're interested, but we can certainly break it out. This, I agree, this was, I think, the way she broke this out in this particular way is something new, but she has all this information. It was just the way that, that she put it in the report.
All right, thank you.
Sure. All right, so now we're going to talk about MCAS because it's so interesting, but our kids are amazing, and they did a fantastic job, and so I want to try to break this, tons of data here, as Liz knows, because the Ed Committee was looking at this. It can be overwhelming and confusing, so I tried to limit it to what maybe is most important in the moment. So when we look at, this is, these students now are currently 11th graders, so these, they took this, the English Math and Science test in the spring. Now, although it says grade 10 Science there, there's a little notation on the, on the DECE information, which I believe is right actually down here, that it's for any, it's the way that they reported out any test that all students took in ninth and 10th grade, they reported it out like that. But the important information here is that our 10th graders, the English Language Arts, that 93% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations. The state is 61%. So our students were 32% higher in hitting, meeting, and exceeding expectations in English Language Arts. And mathematics, 97% of our students earned a meeting or exceeding, and the state is 59%. I do want to point out that this is, this is not the old legacy MCAS, this is the new MCAS, new gener, next generation? Next generation, not new generation, next generation. And, yeah, and this is the first year that they've done the 10th grade MCAS on the computer. And so then they also, our students take the Biology test in ninth grade, and 96% of our students were proficient or higher. That was the old test, and, which is why it's called proficient higher, which is a little separate, different from the meeting and exceeding, and the state earned, the students, on average, 74% of them were proficient or higher. So our students did a fantastic job on the MCAS, very, very proud of the work that they did, and their teachers, for sure. If you look down at the one below there, it says class of 2021, this is, this is the eighth grade MCAS scores for these 10th grade students. And you can see the, can you call this growth? I'm not really sure. The test is completely different, but they, their English scores, so 87% of them were meeting and exceeding, back when they were eighth graders, now 93% are. The state was 49. Once again, this was a new test back then, when they took it, there's been changes to it since they've, you know, gone from eighth, ninth, to 10th grade. And then the mathematics was 74% of our students were meeting or exceeding in ninth grade, now they're 97%. Huge, huge jumps here. It was 48% in the state and 59% in the state for this, for this year. So they've, I don't know, I don't know if a mathematician would call this something that, or even the state would call this something that, they say it's like, it's a little bit apples and oranges, because the test has changed, and yet our kids have done, have done really, really, really well.
We described it as comparing Granny Smith's to Max's.
Granny Smith's to Max's, that's right. I do like both.
Yeah, but still apples, but...
Still apples, but, still apples, a little different. All right, so the Mass Charter Public School Association, I've become very involved with them this year, very, very happy to be back with the Mass Charter School Association, and they actually ran quite a bit of data for us that I got a week or so ago. And once again, we are the number one charter school in the state according to our MCAS results. There were no other charter schools that scored as high as we did in any of the categories. And so, but when, then, they also sent us reports of the rankings in all of Massachusetts, so all public schools in Massachusetts, and AMSA was number two. Our math scores were number two in the state of Massachusetts, our English scores were number three in the state of Massachusetts, and now the ninth grade science, we were number 12. And yet, if you took out all the ties, like, 1-1-1, 2-2, 3-3-3, we actually were number five. And so, once again, I think we can be very, very proud of our students and the hard work and the growth that they've had here at AMSA, and to the commitment of our teachers and all that they do for our kids every single day.
Is number one BLS? Is number one BLS?
You know, number one was, for the math, was actually Harvard Bromfield.
Oh.
Yeah, it's interesting.
What's that, Bromfield?
Bromfield School, yeah. If you, I actually had like the top five on each one, but it was really, it was too much on there, but if you're interested, I've got them, it's, I'm, we're going to paper the walls of the office with it, it's beautiful stuff. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about student growth percentile, because it's a conversation we have every year. I decided to really kind of put the definition down here. There is a 24-page document that the Department of Education has, that if you would like to, to read all about what student growth percentile is, I can share the link with you. But basically, it's this. A student growth percentile, or an SGP, measures how much a student's performance has improved from one year to the next relative to his or her academic peers. So it's not their growth from one year to a next, it's their growth compared to their academic peers across the whole state, not even just across AMSA. And their academic peers are other students statewide with similar MCAS scores from prior years. It's very interesting the way that they put that together.
Because if one goes up, somebody else has to go down, because it's in comparison with each other.
No.
No?
No. Roger, do you, do you have any other thoughts on answering Jess's question?
Well, it's sort of like, I don't know, I would maybe use baseball teams, or baseball teams in different divisions, or stock market, where you're trying to measure, if I got it right, you're trying to measure, you know, student one goes from 60 to 70 to 80, and student two went from 60, 70 to 100. So student two had better growth because from the second year to the third year, they scored better relative to a peer student.
Okay. Right, but the prior year, their scores were basically the same. And then, they take the model, then uses the answer to determine whether the student has grown faster, slower, at a similar rate as their peer...
Okay.
...across the state. So, do you know how many times I read this to myself over the last two weeks? Well, and it's getting just that, the terminology and the rhythm of it. Okay, so now, they are also talking about, and I'm going to show you some, some nice data points in a minute, but they also talk about, in the next slide, I'm going to show you, the median SPG, and just so that we're all on the same page, median means the midpoint. So they take all of our students, create an SGP, and then they take the median of that, and the midpoint of the student growth percentile in the school, and then half of the students had growth percentiles above the median and half had it below the median. Okay?
That's the definition.
That's, that's the whole definition of median, right? Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Half of Americans are earning less than the median salary.
That's, that's right, yes.
How is it out there?
You know, with economics here. All right, so I have to say that this is the first time I've created little arrows, and I was quite proud of myself on this. I'm just learning in all kinds of different ways. But, so this here is, doo-doo-doo, this is our, our English, okay? So AMSA is way up there. Now, what they're saying is 93% met or exceeded our expectations on our ELL, ELL, ELA exam, sorry about that. So our median SGP is 54.5. Now, we like our number to be high, we all know that. We would love this if our growth was out here a little bit more, but it's still, it's still up a little above half. All right, and then on this one, here's math.
Look at us.
Look at us, look over there.
Kill it.
Okay? Yeah. All right, so 97% of our students meet or exceed the expectations, the mean SGP is 81, and we are a real outlier there. So tremendous growth in our math students. Thank you to our math department, our math teachers, Luba Schmidt in particular, for all the work she does with our curriculum, and the teachers who are on the ground every single day, helping our students meet their, and exceed their math expectations in the state, so...
Does the size of the bubble correlate to the number of students that go to that school?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Thank you very much, it does.
Good observation.
I look at a lot.
Any, any questions on this one?
Just, just an, I guess, question for the, for the committee, because this is something that we spent quite a bit of time talking about at the Education Committee, but given that our test scores are so high, we were wondering if this measure is maybe even more important to what we're looking at than the actual test scores, because the test scores are so...
I mean, are they close?
Yes.
Yep.
So there's, there's so little change that we see in the MCAS scores year over year, just because they're just, historically, they've been so high. But this, this was what we really focused in on and talked about, and we thought that this might even be more significant in terms of, of looking at it year over year.
Yeah, we definitely can look at this year over year, and keeping in mind that every year, there's a whole group, a different batch of students that are taking the test, right?
Yeah.
With different strengths and weaknesses, but we certainly, I think we can say that we, we aced it this year.
And this is published by a journal?
Yeah, it's right on the DECE website.
So this is not us publishing the numbers?
No.
This is not publishing...
No, I didn't make that bubble. That I, that I can assure you.
She made the arrows, and that's, we're going to...
I did the arrows, I was pretty proud, and I put the little red words in the side there, you know? My technology. I know, see, Jess, there you go.
And she started the thing herself tonight.
I did. I'm growing leaps and bounds. All right, there we go. Okay, so now we're getting into, this is the DECE Accountability. This is the second year. Sarah and I went to a training that was run by the Department of Education for a whole day in the spring to learn about this new accountability classification system that we have. It is really in the trial stages, and they're really trying to figure out how to make this work or not. This is actually connected to the second, the second piece of paper that you have here. That's probably way too much, there's points involved, and they've, they've really made this very, very complicated.
Does anybody need reading glasses?
Yes, reading glasses, exactly. This is all on the website, but I just want you to know, the, one of the important parts is that this is brand new, it's only the second year, they're still calibrating this, and that in 2017-18, which was the first year, and they were very honest when, when we went to the, the training, that they're really not sure where they're putting their weights and if it's really in the right place or not. But last year, we were, we were partially meets, and that was the category, the classification we found ourselves in, it was a little disappointing. And that was the category, the classification we found ourselves in, it was a little disappointing. There was a lot of factors built in there. One was that they combined our middle school and high school, they don't treat us like two separate schools. But in a district school, like Marlboro, they would count Marlboro High School, and then the middle school separately, and they each would get their own classification. They averaged ours together. And there's a few other factors, too, but that's the one that, that maybe kind of...
Not fair.
Be concerned. And we missed the meeting and exceeding by one point last year, so disappointing. But, that means we had room to grow, and we did. And so this is, this is just a small portion, it is very complicated, the point system that they've created. But what's, what's, well, there's a few things that's really interesting about this. First of all, right now, for this year, so our classification is meeting and exceeding targets, so congratulations to all our kids and teachers. And our score this year was 79, and we had to get up over 75. Keeping in mind that these 70, that doesn't mean a C, that's just the percentages that they have. But what's really interesting, okay, so, forget that 79, forget I said that. All right, our, our score, now this is an annual criterion reference target percentage, and they weight this, they took the 69% that we had in this category last year, and for this year, they weighted it 40%. This year, we earned 86%, and they only gave us a 60% weighting for our current scores. They averaged the two of them together with the weight, and now we have a two-year score of 79%, which gives us the meeting or exceeding targets.
Good thing we're at the advanced math at Mass Academy.
Right.
The kids can...
Yeah, because I could have went to the next meeting.
And as you can see, this is, this is literally three inches of this page here. But, the good news, the takeaway is, our students did a fantastic job, our teachers are amazing, we love them all, we are meeting or exceeds targets, we are the number one charter school in the state, we're number two in mathematics, we're number three in English, and I think we're rocking it. And go Eagles.